Okay.
Thank you.
Let's say Lee Davis.
Say Lee Davis up there.
No. Uh, Arkansas. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, what's your name? Play sense. Randy, Randy. Who said the bomb?
Interesting.
Yeah, I'll shoot you both an email tomorrow. Yeah, it might be easy. I won't, I wonder if we can even have one. But I would think it would be easier to have it on the survey website. So, yeah, somewhere that people have to see. Yeah. See, Phil, you are survey number
It did like, like the bank account.
Three more to get here.
Start from 100 or 1,000.
There you go, need me tonight? Uh, I don't know. Dan is regrouped.
I'm here.
Where are you, Dan?
I'm in Myrtle Beach.
Oh, lucky you.
I was in the ocean this afternoon.
Will you shut off his lead, please?
How was the weather in Myrtle Beach?
I don't want to hear.
It was about 72 today, beautiful day. I was in the ocean, so it was a nice day.
That's good.
I'm certain that Kurt will be here. I'm fairly certain that Kate will be here. I don't think Phil's coming.
Well, I think it's time.
We do have a forum, right? We have one, two, three, four. There's a forum. And you can elevate him.
Jim, why don't we elevate you for the moment? And if one more person comes in. We have seven people around, or six people around the table plus Dan. Then I could date you. You know, you can date her. Absolutely.
Well, we have four of these things.
Right, we have a corps. But, you know, the more people, the merrier. And if we have five people, you know, there's a tiebreaker in there should should Chris's subdivision become very contentious. Regularly shake. Anyhow, so let's get started. This is the infield planning board. It is November 10th, 2021. It's a couple of minutes after seven and we are in the DPW conference room. And one of our members, Dan Cottley, is on Zoom. So, roll call attendance from my left.
Linda Jones.
I'm David Frash, Eric Russell. Okay, Jim, we're gonna call you a voting member for tonight since we seem to be short on a couple of people. And on Zoom, okay, here we have Kurt.
Is, is Kate coming?
She's right there.
Okay.
I'm gonna take your chair.
So, we have two people, two members on Zoom. Three, four, five, six, you're, you're still elevating. Okay? Yep. So, on Zoom, we have Dan Kylie. Say hi, Dan.
Hello.
And Kate Stewart.
Hello.
All right. We have a visitor on Zoom. I will. Is this the name right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, so. Department, okay. Anyone from the public have any comments that do not relate to the agenda items? In other words, if you're not here for the hearing or the discussion on zoning ordinance changes and amendments, now is your time to speak. Okay? Kate, select board report, please. Kate? Are you there?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm not sure, yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can, okay. Y Valley has got a kind of unstable connection tonight and it's saying that right now. So, if I get bounced, I'm very sorry. So, select board met on November 1st. David was there to give us an update on a community workshop and updating on the master plan. So, that was great, thanks for doing that, Dave. And Kurt talked to us about streaming meetings and we're going to be trying to look at just broadcasting the Zoom for now as a first step and we're going to do a test pilot with the select board meeting. Eventually, that'll affect planning board if the test pilot goes well because meetings will also be live streamed. Recreation Commission came with a proposal to convert the two part-time positions into one full-time position. And we'll be meeting with the budget committee. Took a quick look at some upcoming capital reserve funds, some proposed policy, personnel policy updates to make us a little bit more competitive. Advanced education and college tuition reimbursement. That gives us a little bit of a degree incentive. And then we did some reassignments of folks to committees and accepted some donations.
Okay. Any questions for Kate? All right. Next review of the October 27 minutes. Everybody had a chance to read them.
I have a couple of things.
Linda, go ahead, please.
On line 97. It says they plan to put in a four bay car wash. However, on line 137, it says there'd be a two car wash base.
I think it is two.
I thought it was four.
You thought it was four?
I did. I caught the error and I thought it was four. I have a problem too.
I recall two as well. I don't think there's enough room for four.
Yeah, always the storage shed might be four.
There were four storage.
Yeah. Pretty sure it was a two bay. Well, well. I mean, it's conceptual, so you could just do two slash four.
Also, just eliminate the number of days.
Yeah, right.
It's actually why it's a car wash.
Right, okay, right, because it has a conceptual, so.
Yeah.
That's certainly an easier way to handle it. Yeah.
On 120, line 126, isn't it Flanders Street or Flanders Avenue?
Yes. It's two.
Okay, so 126 should be Flanders. Three. And what's another one that's under Street two? What?
Line 140.
Yes. Line 140, Flanders. Well, it may be still correcting line 1212. Mr. Russell also suggested the addition of changing LED signs once per day. Later to clarify what he meant below, so maybe that's later it says on line 232, no more than once per 24 hour period, so. Do we want to delete the first reference?
It was, it was an ongoing conversation.
Because it's okay, because it's corrected itself.
Well, I think it's representative, but I mean, I'm finding the way it's representative of the discussion. Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, it was, you know, going, just, what do we want?
Yeah, so that's what I think.
Anybody else have any comments? I have a couple. Line 95. Property formerly of Brownies Auto, it still is. Until the actual sale goes through. It was owned by Brownies. And Rob, could you hold up that map again for me? So, the way I'm looking at it, maybe wrong here. The car wash is entirely in the CB.
Correct.
Yep, and on line 100, it says part of the car wash would be in the R1 zone.
That's the storage.
It's actually all of the car wash is in CB. And part of the storage, self-storage units would be in R1.
Actually, quite a small.
Those are my thoughts.
Oh, I did have one more thing. And it's line 113, 114. He suggested that Mr. Bergeron and Mr. Bergeron may want to try for a variance. And just to be consistent, they were referred to as Mr. Beaver Bergeron and Mr. R Bergeron. Bergeron, a couple of paragraphs up.
Anybody else have anything on minutes? Would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we accept the minutes for October 27, 2021 as corrected.
One second, 100 seconds. All in favor? Aye, close. Extensions.
They were all, they were all.
Okay, Kate is abstaining. If she wasn't here.
Kate's abstaining.
Okay. Next. Hearing. Enfield Land Use Case, P211101. Mark Kenny is keeping minor subdivision suitable. He created two lots from one on Oak Hill Road. That's 12 lot, 21 on that one. Subject property is in the R5 Zone District and currently 11.4 acres. Lot A is proposed to become 6.42 acres. And lot B is proposed to become 5.03 acres. Mark Kenny is property owner and he will be represented in this case by Chris Rollins. Large copy of the map out. And Chris, you want to describe the subdivision property for us, please?
Okay. As David said, I'm Chris Rollins, representing Mark Kenny. Mark owns 11.45 acres on Oak Hill Road. It has a garage, a driveway, all lines into the garage. The lot itself was created by minor subdivision back in 2000. And then it's left through 2008. So, the most recent division was 2008, so we're, we're okay on the, on the five year limit on minor subdivision. Mark would like to create one extra lot for five acres with a proposed driveway off Oak Hill Road. The road is very straight and flat, visibility is, is non-impeded, all this, and the driveway should be very safe. We haven't done any soils work, but my, my experience, the, the back part, the part beyond this, and first hand, is a very nice area. When I create a lot, I'd like to imagine where I would build if I would like to live in it. And it's very nice back in this, back three quarters of an acre, three quarters of a lot. You're away from all your neighbors, pretty much. And this quiet soils are appear to be quite well-grained. You don't see roots clinging to the top of the ground there. I would estimate probably a three foot water table there. As you get closer to the road, all the way up through here, the road is really kind of a source of wetness and so there, there's no wetland on there that I, I saw, but it's a little bit closer to the surface by the, by the road. And that goes with, goes also for joining the lot from down along the lot. But this section isn't compared with that. I did, I did, of course, while I was sitting in the car, I flashed the plan open and I noticed a typo, which I would like, if this board does approve this subdivision, I would like to correct and bring, bring in some corrective plans over on this lot configuration. I called where it's split in half, I called that a 6.02, that's 6.42. I'm happy to let it go until it doesn't, but when it doesn't really take away from the description, it was correct underneath. I'm also happy to correct it and bring it.
We're going to do a firewall.
Yeah.
We have, you have that with you?
I have it. You know. I'm, I'm happy to just one question. Uh, I, I guess Mark's intent is, because we don't really need to discuss that, I think he's going to put that on the market that they need a lot, so. There are properties that are needed these days. The market is good.
So is.
That's, I guess that's about all I have to say.
Okay. Board members have any questions or comments on the proposal? Kurt? It's just questions really, that's too serious, just more, just how it plays out. On, I guess, in the deed itself or the current parcel, there's a, here, restrictions on single and double wide models.
That, yeah, that's exactly how it works.
Yeah.
I just, I don't find it perfect.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm assuming that was for this parcel created subdivision. So, from, it'd be more with the building, for the minutes, for the building inspector. Does that carry over onto both lots now?
I would presume it would be on both properties. I'm not on attorney, but I think that's.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was like, I was like, so what happens there?
Yeah, that, you know, that's the whole, if it's, if it's encumbered, it would go with both and there may be some technical reason why it's not.
Yeah, okay. And my other question is, is also this preserved right from, from a well? See any well that might have been referenced?
No, that was something that was on this whole nipples subdivision.
Yeah.
It's one of those things where there's problems, the problem, surely there's a well somewhere, but I don't know where, so you just, everybody has the covered inside.
Yeah, so it just gets carried through in the deeds.
Yeah.
That was my only question I had. Anything, are you there?
No.
Yeah, anything?
I'm good.
And Kate? Anything?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, in that case, I will declare the public hearing closed.
Did you ask, she wanted to?
Lee, did you have any comments you wanted to make on this? I can't hear you, you're muted. Lee, you're muted, unmute yourself. The lower, lower left, left corner.
I can ask her to unmute.
Nope, still can't hear you.
I got it.
There you go.
No, Lee Davis here. No, I was just interested in, he mentioned not wet land, but that the land was wet. Is that what he said?
Is that the way you care?
Well, no, it's, it's not wet. You wouldn't get wet and it's not a wetland. It, the water table is higher. Soils, of course, are categorized a lot, one of the categories is the presence of water and how close it is to the surface. Near the road, it's a little flat and water doesn't drain away as quickly as it does in the back part. So, I would, I would expect the water table out here to be maybe two feet down. Or out in the back, in the western part, it's probably three feet down. So, it's not a wetland, you don't need boots or anything, or there's no gurney.
I thought that's what you meant when you said the land was wet. I just wanted to clarify, just to make sure I heard it right, that's all, thank you.
There are some wet areas in some of the other lots and near these culverts across the road, but we don't have that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, we'll begin before the public hearing closes. Board members, discussion. I'm great. Are you good? Dan? You're good?
Yeah.
I'm good.
Kate?
I'm so good, thank you.
All right. First question that I have for the board is, are you willing to the incorrect acreage on the inset? Or would you like Chris to do another mylar? Or would crossing it out, correcting it with his initial some date be satisfactory? Say, I'm like. I'm good with crossing initial of the, the record of deeds is okay with that on my lot. And the other ones are really, probably final word on them.
I, I, I would prefer not to do that. I would prefer to correct this.
Okay, that's fine. Appreciate that, we're, you know, I'm just trying to offer it to you as, as, as an option. Certainly, you know, if you get the big time tonight.
I, I'm not, I'm not sure whether the registry would accept it. Except, you know, they used to, the planning boards used to dribble all kinds of stuff on the apps. And those, hopefully those days happen.
I think for your paper copy, just a little in correction.
Yeah.
So you don't have all the files.
Yeah.
That'd be, that'd be fine.
That's good.
Okay. Do we need to condition this upon an approved subject for?
I would say no.
Okay. Is it five acres? There's a kind of point to state uses.
Yeah.
I thought it was five.
It's five.
Okay, and we're at 5.03, so we've got that threshold. Anything else the board would like to add away with conditions, if not, a good movement motion? Make a motion to accept the minus subdivision of the M W Kenny property, map 12, lot 21-1, as presented. You know, with their corrected mylar. Okay, motion has been made in the second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Close. Extensions. Right, it is unanimous.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Great to see you.
Yep.
Appreciate all your help. Yeah. I miss you.
So, we can, we can get along with just with the paper ones.
Yeah, I think that's.
If you want to get me a corrected mylar.
Hey, how many copies of the paper document do you need, Rob?
I've got two in my, in my folder, so that's usually enough, as we've discovered. But if you want to leave a couple more, we'll keep them.
No, we've got somebody coming in.
Somebody's trying to come in. It's Sealy.
Or it's Mabel Schwartz.
That's a trivial pursuit question. That's a trivial pursuit question for the infield edition. Who is Mabel Schwartz?
So, when I bring them up, if I bring some papers too, can you sign those when you, when you have a chance? As well as the mylar.
We'll get the chair.
In that way.
Yeah.
Let me just check, we, we already got our fees from you. We did.
All right, so I'll probably have the decision at the weekend. So, better be ready to, to buy, whenever we can get the corrected mylar. We'll get it, we can go together.
No, we'll close, we'll also. At any other time.
All right. Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a great evening. Appreciate you coming in. Hey. Next, we have a discussion of proposed zoning ordinance changes and amendments. Kurt?
Everybody has their. Everything.
The one labeled final draft.
Yes.
Final draft, 10/27/2021. So, I basically I made some changes probably from the last meeting. In page one, there's everything we've already agreed to and accepted. Assuming that's still good, though. Each two, I believe, same. The we believe I made any changes in several meetings ago on that one. Business, that's page three, that's still, what has been all the wrong. Kurt? I have a question or comment on the community business district change.
Yeah.
In our workshops and surveys and the community meetings that we had over the weekend, it seemed to me that there was overwhelming desire to focus on Main Street generally and to develop it as a kind of mixed-use commercial, retail and residential area. And that certainly seems to me personally like the direction that town should go. That being the case, I would ask, why are we taking this out? If we're only going to probably put it back in once we have a master plan that says this is the mixed-use, commercial, retail, residential area.
Well, one, this covers all of the CV, not just Main Streets. And, and it's, well, actually not this. Well, actually, I'm correct, I'm stand corrected. This is the subparagraph in the CV. This requires, yes, this be done. But that eliminated, it makes it an option.
Um, you know, if we intend to drive commercial, residential, mixed use. In my opinion, keeping the requirement as it is is the way to go. Maybe other boards may do it differently, but I'd like to get people's thoughts on it.
I, I think it's. I think with it, with it deleted, it gives more flexibility to a developer. And it's been there for over five years, probably close to ten now. And you can see what's introduced.
Well, where, okay, what has it produced? Other, other than the Davidson property? Has, has there been any other issue? Where?
It's, nothing's gone in. It's, uh, no commercial, no commercial, it's gone in with residential above.
Well, you haven't had any turnover until this fall when Arago moved out. So. I think we should move it in. Eric, any thoughts? Well, I agree, I agree with your wonderful flexibility. I had to wonder if this is given how many changes we have, is this one we should be till after the master plan? Ever, with the debate until next year, hopefully. Because it is a kind of a substantial, well, it is a meaningful change.
It was put in at the request of N G Village Association, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm happy on this one.
It was.
And as far as the impacts of removing it, I think it would have less impact on whether or not new businesses come in, and more impact on businesses, buildings that have a different building, like the longer mat. Well, that's just be, this would make housing be buy right there in the sort of place for the reception or that might be, or anything like that.
You still get a crack at them with site plan, because that's a change.
But I'm just saying, like, what, what properties does this actually affect?
Yeah.
Does it affect the upper block? It affects the longer mat, it affects.
Arago.
That building, which would affect that immediately, it, it does affect the, the working job as well.
Yeah.
The largest, it would affect the actual all of Davidson's building.
Yeah, right.
But yeah, but those are already.
Jim Kellerhurst proposing a development of the, of the Eons.
Right, but Davidson's already had the special exception.
Yeah, sixteen sixty-two, I've already got it.
Yeah. I'm trying to think like the practical, like on a practical level of what properties would, would have.
You know, one thing that I've said, if it, if it is converted to residential, I think there's, there's a feeling like, once it's gone, it's never coming back. But I just don't, I don't agree with that, because if you upgrade those to, you know, have a shower and a kitchen, they can easily be turned back into businesses, because a kitchen and a shower in a business is actually a good thing. People would want that for a break room, or, you know, for employees that go for runs on their lunch hour, you know, those are the kind of things that might make an office space even nicer, so. I just don't think it's, I mean, I think there's a, there was a feeling, and I, I can't speak exactly to their motivations back then, that once it was converted, it was gone, you know, like, could never come back for multi-use. It was residential, that was it.
I, I agree, you know, once, once it is converted, you can convert it back. But now, the whole process of waiting until a tenant decides to leave and not renew a lease or whatever. And if we leave it at, or if we take this provision out, then a building or a landlord would probably become a little bit more motivated to buy a commercial or retail tenant.
I think the, the original thought was being part of the Main Street program and how the philosophy of a mixed neighborhood and was to have the, the ground floor be commercial and above it residential. But there was reality that happened, and that was that businesses didn't want to be on Main Street. And, and the few that were there didn't quite make it. So, so it just didn't happen.
Yeah.
It didn't, it didn't help.
Right, right, and like I said, with it in, and where it's currently wording is going, it's a requirement except by special exception, which is another burden on the developer, where if it's removed, they can still put commercial there if they choose. If they can get more money for commercials, and that's what they want to do, that's why they'll go there. But we keep saying there's a need, a need for housing. So this would free, allow by right apartments on the first floor.
But there are already apartments on the first floor.
On the other building, in some of the buildings, yeah.
I see.
Well, you know, this goes to public hearing and we should see what problems we get there. Yeah, I mean, it's, I'm just sort of looking at. It was a good idea, but it just doesn't need to be working, and the thought originally was that wanted to encourage more housing. This was preventing this.
Can I just weigh in for a second?
Please.
So, I, I think it's, normally I would support removing this, because also I think it takes away some of the rights of the property owner to discern, to discern how their property, which at one point was somewhat residential through many years, gets used. But I think there's a lot of unclear messaging, and I'm not blaming anybody, but anytime you're talking about change and talking about ideas, ideas turn into rumors, right, and then we find out that they're gonna put an interstate on Lock Haven, the next thing we know, I'm kidding, just for a note. And so I wonder if it won't add to the confusion to modify, you know, to resent it, modify, and then next year perhaps make another modification. And where we're looking at a pretty long ballot, this might be one of the ones that, instead of doing it and then doing it again. So I don't know where we're gonna land, I just wanted to toss that out there.
I mean, if it's, I, I'm okay either way, I mean, I'm not bound to this, it doesn't affect me personally. I don't know, I'm probably down there, so I have no stake in the game, if this is there or not. But I think, I do think with the master plan that there should be a separate village zone. And defines probably with a lot of silver lines almost, a kind of, and this would fall in that district. So maybe then it's a complete rewrite for that district. And this would be changed then.
Rob, you want to weigh in as the administrator?
Well, I've given you a little bit of my opinion, I think that, I did, I was contacted by the owner, Dr. Hettelman, of the Arago property, and he was actually intending to come in for the special exception that convert his, just to give him the flexibility to do either or. And I think that he's actually sold the property. He has a buyer, or without a buyer, I think it's already happened, so. I'm not sure what the new owners will do, we've actually been contacted by a company that's doing a level one brownfields assessment on the site. It sounds like new owners doing their due diligence, just to sort of assure themselves that it's clear and clean. But we'll see what happens. I, I was very close to having another engineering firm lined up, actually based in Merritt, and a guy that worked at Criary, I told you that story. Ben Ramsey, Mark Ramsey was looking at it. So we were kind of excited, because it was almost like a one-for-one, they're very similar to Arago, because Arago, I think, Nabeel used to work at Criary, and so it was, it was this close, but I guess it was just too much, he was thinking, trying to buy it, and it just, it all fell through. But like I said, my communications with Dr. Hettelman and others, you know, that, my, my opinion is if it's flipped over to residential and ten years down the road, all of a sudden there's a huge demand for office space, I, I could see all those units that we've converted to residential could be made available. And it's gonna be that much nicer for office space with a, with a kitchen and a, and a shower. I mean, that's basically the difference between those units, and, you know, we've seen what they did at, at at Mike Davidson, so I've seen, I actually got to see some of those units before they rented them. And they did a nice job, actually, you know, it was gentrification really of the, of the units they'd put in stainless steel appliances and new flooring and painted the places, and so they, they made some pretty decent units compared to what they were before, so. Flexibility is great. I, I agree with Kate, it's probably not a good idea to go back and forth a few times, so. So maybe this is the one, as Eric said, that we just sort of set aside and kind of come back to it.
So I'm hearing Kate, Eric, and myself. They, let's leave it in, set it aside. Dan, what are your thoughts?
My, I'm kind of like Kurt. If you want to put it off until the master plan, we can do that. I mean, personally, I would have voted to get rid of it, because I think it has been a hindrance, but we can wait a year.
Well, at this point, we're only talking about, you know, putting it before the public at our public hearing.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so we can, we can get rid of the change, it'll make the ballot smaller.
Is everybody comfortable with taking the four oh one point four paragraph five off of our proposed list?
I am, because at the present time, we, we don't prevent anyone putting residential on the first floor, the, the process is a step longer.
Yeah. Okay, so, excellent. I, I only brought this up because somebody brought it up, that's why.
My, here's that, I'm, the master plan is actually moving forward now, so, and hopefully in a year or two, we'll be making some serious zoning changes. And if we, we look at then.
Okay, continue, Eric.
Four oh one point five is simply just fixing the paragraphs so it makes sense. For, oh gee, I'm sorry, gee, yeah.
Can I just, that's just a formatting thing? I don't think that needs to go on the, on the.
But it was just something I caught when I was going through, and I don't want to ever fall for the cracks. So it's just on the sheet here.
Yep.
Four oh one point five, number two, use restrictions, H, just delete that whole thing. We agreed there was something to do. Same as the Village chain alternative, to delete that option, since we have a possible development option already. And then we get into signs. Page four, in the four oh eight C. Yeah, I came up with, assuming this is the correct title, if it's wrong, correct me. For Rob's new, Rob's title is Land Use Economic Administrator, is that correct?
Land Use and Community Development Administrator.
Community Development.
Yeah, but we could, I mean, that's what, that's one too, that I think, I mean, Land Use Administrator is my title as well, I mean, it's just, basically, there's multiple.
What do you typically, what's your phone message share?
What's that?
When someone calls you on the phone.
It says Land Use and Community Development Administrator.
Land Use and Community Developments. Okay, I'll just type over them.
That's all right.
Have you noticed how we can never remember that?
Yeah. Well, so, I mean, like I said, I mean, technically, I am the Land Use Administrator, and it's, it's, it is my title.
That was, that was showed up somewhere, I don't know where I invited off the web page.
I think we went through a couple of years ago, when we did zoning changes, and we swapped out anywhere, it was, it said zoning administrator, we changed it to land use administrator. Because that's the term that we're using nowadays to sort of all encompass, not just zoning, but planning as well.
Okay, four oh eight D, I think I got what we agreed to. All the signs will be illuminated. Someone see something I missed or should have added or not added?
Uh, grammatical question.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if this is correct or not. We have a variant somewhere. Our last paragraph, should display messages be changed to display messages? I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, well, we're talking about the messages that should not be changed.
One thing I'd like to mention, I think I've been doing that, is that we have a lot of historic homes and historic districts, and we really should address having, having lighting and signage that is in line with the street state. I don't know, I don't know how you put that in here. Other towns have it in there, in in, in the special regulations for historic districts.
And so we don't have an historic district.
Oh, well, yes, we do.
Not by, not by zoning laws, we have a, whatever you want to call it, that that it's been working with in the historical society, but we have an area with historical homes and stuff, but there's not a zoning historical district that regulates what someone can and cannot do.
Well, you're, you're confusing district with regulation. We have the district, it's one of the largest in the state, and we have a second one, which is over at the Shaker Museum. So those are the districts we have.
Okay, okay.
And what we don't have is any special regulations for them. And the reason to, and is to be able to become a certified local governor. And the reason for that is that you're eligible for grants that are much, much larger. Now, instead of fifty thousand. Now, instead of fifty thousand or two hundred thousand. They can go up into nine. And so that's how small towns end up renovating. Franklin renovated a whole theater in a block. I mean, I, they became a certified local government and um. Anyway.
Yeah, yeah, back to your original question is. I, I, I'm not gonna sit down and write something for that because it's too late.
Well, I think it, I think it belongs in a different space, I guess.
Maybe that's something that we should incorporate into the master plan. Regulations.
Do we really want to get into as a town, the differentiating between different parts of towns for? Things like signs and lighting. I'm just asking the general question because, you know, Canaan has, they don't have zoning, but they have their one historic district and. It's hard to explain to people why one section of town has one thing and one has another. Can we not make something that's friendly enough for our town that we wouldn't mind seeing it everywhere?
I don't think that it's unfriendly for Canaan Street house. And, and they have something special there to protect. And if you read their zoning regulations for Canaan Street, you'll find that they. Um, they're very similar to ours.
One of our residents, um full-time Enfield residents also has. A property on Canaan Street that they're responsible for and spoke to me about the concerns they had about how restrictive and how picky they were there. And whether we were going to be picking at historic homes here and making it so people couldn't live in and enjoy, like even if they need to put a new window in their shed, so. I think that's something to think about whether we're gonna really get into picking at people who are in a historic area. You know, we could be like Salisbury or we could be Enfield.
I mean, this sign ordinance uh was such, there's no sign ordinance and sign illumination is a town wide. Uh, then so. It's, I mean, it would be mostly affecting the commercial properties. Is that the ones who are putting up these type of signs? But it is a townwide zoning law, so. I mean. As far as something for a special section of town. I'm not ready to. I think I should come out of the master plan also, if that's where the town wants to go. I, I think there's enough language in the. Ordinance, the sign ordinance, as we're going to massage it to be. That would um. Provide for. The view of signs and if it was in a residential area or there was a resident next to it. Uh, I think we would be able to uh. Exert some. Control over the signs. Is that correct? I mean, this is strictly signs, it's not, has nothing to do with lights and gen- right, so this is just a sign that's displaying a message. Right, so yeah. So I mean, you know, if, if, if there was a sign that was uh. Too bright, it was, you know, possibly shining into somebody's. Well, you mean what's currently on the board, so this? So what, what, what we're trying. Okay, okay, I just want to clarify, yeah. Yeah, what we have on the books is seriously lacking. And say, be able to say no. Uh. Yeah, I mean, it's. When you say I. I think this covers, but we are proposing covers. Any situation that might come up. Yeah, it doesn't, then we'll find out. I think, I think so, uh. Yeah, I, I think it gives us a mechanism. That if we, if we see a problem, uh. Yeah. Modify what the applicant is asking for. Yeah. That give you a little bit more level of comfort, Linda?
I, I can see your side.
Okay. Alright, so page five. Um, I was. At the top of the page goes along with four oh eight sign illumination. Then, uh. Four oh eight, uh, point two. Okay, that's, yeah, that's just direct white lighting, that's what I currently say. And. That would be. Replaced with the sign illumination stuff. Uh. Four oh eight five, uh, sign permit requirements. Four oh eight point seven enforcements. To be deleted and then replaced with a new language. Standing at the bottom of the page, sign permit procedures and enforcement. I have, I have a couple of questions on that paragraph here. Um. Where you say any changes to signs shall require a new permit. Um, what are you getting at? I mean. Yeah. I mean, I, 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 I could interpret this as. If I have an LED sign that has programmed the messages on, do I read it for it? Yeah, this is, I didn't. I don't believe I changed the wording from what I was copying. So they, I think I understand what they're trying to do there, but yeah, I can see where. It could be interpreted differently, um, any changes to the physical structure of the sign maybe. Yeah, yeah, it's not the length, it's not the wording of it, it's not the message, it's not the message, it's the physical sign. So. Design. Or the modifications. Dracula. It's also. I just dropped it, it's also. Positive. The. Well, we, I think what, what you're getting at, right, these changes to relative to the messages. Doing the different word there. Yeah. Yeah, some modifications to the physical sign. Yeah, I think that would, so physical modifications of the design shall require a permit. Yeah, right, because we're not dealing with what is saying. If you're going from a. A plain sign with no lights or sign with lights, that's a change.
Physical design, I think it's probably the best, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, how would you interpret that as the person who would have to? Yeah, yeah. Get asked the question, what, what label?
Yeah.
Easy, easy, we have to. About the output in general and say, no, this is what I think it means. Oh, what did you just?
Physical design. Any modifications to the physical design of the sign?
Rob, last meeting, we talked about, um, you have a sign permit form.
Yeah.
You can share with us.
I do. He's there right now.
Oh, I have one other question on this paragraph third, uh, and. Application for sign permits involving non-residential sites. Shall be made concurrently with site plan applications to planning. My question is. A, what if there's no site plan involved?
Oh.
Um. For instance, the gentleman that bought the. What else could see that property precipitated this whole discussion?
Mm-hmm.
Um. You know, he's just talking about putting up a sign initially. Uh, without any information or even conception, just a concept. Of what he's gonna do with the rest of the property. So there's not necessarily a site plan. All of that. Or if there's just a change in. The sign as in previous paragraph where permit needs to be obtained. Uh. You know, I, I, it, it just kind of muddies the water, I would say that. It has to be made concurrent to the site plan application. Well, it says application for sign forms involving non-residential sites. So. But, let's assume that ninety-nine percent of signs could be by residential. Well. What I'm turning that to mean is. If someone's coming in with a site plan and they're gonna have signs. And it's part of the process of the cycling. Now, if they just want to put up a sign on empty lots. Then, then they go to the zone. Maybe you need to put that around them. Site plan applications. Yeah, sign, yeah. Um. Man, I'm sort of agreeing with you. Yeah, yeah. You know, it seems like what you're trying to do is actually the inverse of what it says. Yeah, where you want site plan reviews to include the. Impeded sign. Okay, so same thing. Not the sign requires site. Right, right, yeah. So, yeah, um, just kind of flip it around. Say, um. Where, where site plan, I'm just taking a lot of you, where site plan. Application, okay, site plan applications. Should include. Sign permit. Application where possible. When need, when we're needed, when needed.
The sign says visit or listen.
We don't control the message.
So we allow billboards and.
If, if on site, you were to remove that would be off premises advertising. Right. I mean, I, I don't know that we have a prohibition of this. Yeah, instead of time, we have stats, but we can't control the message. Right. So if somebody wants to put up a billboard that says. That's limited to the size. It's limited to the size and, you know, setbacks. I mean, you know, if somebody wants to put up a sign that says, uh, Big Bird for Senate. Um. You know, they certainly could do that. Within their rights.
Mm-hmm.
On a commercial property, right? I'm, I'm feeling that's a long issue. Like the, anyway, so. Site plan review. So, how about sign? Sign permit review shall be filed obviously. Which I don't, site plan application for the planning board. To the. Application for sign. And they can say we don't have any sign permits, don't need any. Or they, or they. And say, yeah, we're gonna have a sign, but it's really not designed yet. So we can go back later. Yeah, good. So I, I think you got the language nailed. Did you repeat it? Which version we're gonna use? So I just said, site plan applications through the planning board should include applications for sign permits. Real positive. Because I can easily just say, we don't intend to have any signs, therefore there are no signs. Yeah. Alright.
Rob, is there a fee for the sign?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five. Yep.
Pretty loud.
That's set by the zoning board, that's a, it's a ZBA fee.
Man. Some of what fits into what should be on the application. And, uh, and either. Change things or add things to this kind of application if you want. Actually, put the sign application.
I've got it up on the screen if you guys won't see it. So it starts with, uh. And this is the sign application that we've had for many, many years, so.
Yeah, yeah, um, just gonna read through and see this, um. It's everything in here is actually on the, if you want to add something. Name, address, phone, fax, email. Authorized agents.
We, we can hear you. Could you mute? Talking to the phone. Thank you.
Well, location. Position, I. And it's. I don't know that really needed. I think it's. Method of illumination, yes, size and height, yes. Um, total area including supports. That seems a little unclear to me. And I think what we wanna. Wanna look at is the area of the. Signs itself. And then we have a separate thing that says. Well, I, I would interpret that as you have posts coming up. The sign's attached to it, you measure from the outside of the post to outside of the post. Not what someone's gonna call the sign inside the post. This is our existing application, it's around here, using this. Yeah, it's successful.
I think the most important is that height from the ground is, and now it's limited to, I think it's twelve feet. So.
So. If. If I want to put up a four by eight sign for two square feet. Which is, I think, a pretty common size for signs. Um, and there are four by four posts, or between two four by four posts. I've gotta add eight inches to the width. And if posts stick up six inches above the sign, I better add that. And that's gonna reduce my size.
Yep.
Or redesign the sign.
So I think, you know, judging just by my interpretation of it, is it's. Simple supports are not really that impactful, but if you have something like. Oh, we have one, there's one down here with its, its trees with a bear climbing up and. So the, the, the sign supports become more. Important, you know, consequential. In that case, do you see what I'm saying? Four by fours won't add too much in terms of surface area.
Um. I guess I'm looking at it from the.
Yeah, yeah, which I do too.
It's just, I know.
Yeah.
It just takes a little more, more difficult and I think not consistent with. With other, um. Cities and towns, the other.
Yeah, so for me, it would be as a sign maker. The substrate, which is the actual.
Yeah.
That's, that's the sign, not the supports and.
Right.
You know. But that's what we'll be, that's what we, we got when I got here, it was already. If you want to strike that language about the support.
I would, I would definitely change it, but that's the sign that you're trying to. The other thing, I didn't, this application is successful, the application is not. That's still Rob interpreting the. Right. Right.
The regulation, and we may want, I mean, if it's working, it's working.
Yeah, sure.
And like I said, I never actually. Downloaded what the true application is.
Do we even need to define the application in the zone? Or is it just that we have an application and it's Rob.
Yeah. Yeah.
I would like to redesign this to include the fee, should, the fee should be on the application.
Yeah, I mean, I was. When I was proposing, I mean, like I said, this was just a cut and paste of what, like, Bobby from the other town, and this is what they spelled out and.
In my mind, you don't need to define the application, instead of there's an application.
Right.
And it's.
Fill it out.
Part of his job is to have an application that hits all the different buttons on, number one, the regulations, but also there probably is some other. Information, right, like, did you get the inspection for your electricals, you know, or whatever.
Yeah, right.
Which is not.
Right, right.
But, yeah, it's part of his job.
And then, and then.
I wouldn't even, I would.
Right, I, I agree, I would just leave all that off.
Take it out.
Yeah, just say it's, go up to, um. The applicant shall. Attend now. Permit from the.
Well, you say it right here, the application for sign permit shall be made upon the form provided by the town for this purpose.
Okay.
And then those, those two sentences stay. Uh, this page is just clarifying the changes decided about the permit.
Right.
Do we have fillable forms?
That was something I was gonna talk about.
Rob's job.
Yeah, so we, we do not yet, Kate, I would like to see that, we, uh.
Do you have a full version of Adobe?
We do not, I do not.
I, I have one as well, so it's something I'm happy to help with.
So I would love to do it for all of our forms, because it's not just the sign permits, the planning board application, the zoning.
I can do that.
ZBA application.
I think they would be easier to read when they come in, because a lot of folks don't have the ability. To self-fill forms unless you put the fields in for them, so you'd get more typewritten ones and maybe more likelihood that they would use the form.
Absolutely.
As intended.
Yeah, and then you can actually read the handwriting.
Yes, I would like to see that, I would love to do that.
Process on the square bill.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
How much is a version of, uh? Adobe?
Um, I bought mine for half price when I got my lap, new laptop, and I want to say it was a hundred bucks, so maybe two hundred or so. But you might be able to get it through TechSoup, I don't know if we have a TechSoup account.
Not to my knowledge.
It's probably a subscription by now, I think.
I think it is, I think it is, yeah.
For a basic.
Yep, I would like to do that.
Okay, then I do the zoning document with hypo loans and stuff like that, then.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, we're, we're getting a little off topic.
Right, right, okay, so. You know, just, uh, get the sign permit and then, and then it's, right, all this other stuff not in the zoning and Rob can change this permit as needed.
We're just gonna change the, the physical. Design, adding that.
That's up to you.
Okay.
Um. Your last paragraph on page six having to do with. Um, essentially fines for violation of design ordinance. Uh, does Rob have the power to set fees or fines? I am open.
I do.
Kate, can you help us out on that? Who said, who sets, um? Fines for ordinance violations?
Fines for ordinance violations?
Select board.
I would say, yeah, I mean, unless it's, the state law says otherwise, I'd say usually we're free to set some fines.
I know if we take as zoning enforcement. We can, uh, there, I mean, we, we say that our lawyer, our town attorney.
Right.
Can, uh, go for, uh. Um, a ruling from a judge for fines and, you know, uh, legal fees. And I think that a, a, a superior court judge can actually set those fees. I know they did it for a case in Plainfield, it was like a hundred dollars per infraction. So I don't know, that's a good question.
Um, you know, Rob, we could probably ask Jack.
Yeah.
Do you want to ask Jack, because he often has a good answer on.
Yeah, he's a lawyer, so you can get some free advice from him. Yeah.
Those are just free advice.
That's right, we're paying.
And we are paying.
We can just delete that last line and, um.
I, I would just wait until we get clarification as to how, you know, how, as you said, who's that.
Yep.
Yeah, but. Just delete it. Right, just delete that last line, it's gonna be. Oh, cost of blah blah would be borne by the violator.
Right.
Well, yeah, but do we, do we even know that we can impose fines?
So I would say something like, failure to comply with these regulations. Uh, would mean you're subject to, uh.
Right, but this is, this is in zoning.
Yeah, any, I'd just say any fines and, and/or penalties, right, then you.
And legal costs.
Yeah.
Okay, and it'll be a zoning violation, so.
Yep.
Whatever that's, wherever those fines come from, or who says they bounce.
Okay, so I, I think deleting the last line with, uh. Think of. You know, any area that we are totally confused about. Probably zoning violations.
And then actually deletes, so leave that line, but delete the other stuff that's more. More than the permit stuff too.
What, Dan?
I said, just, just drop, just ended it. At violator, borne by the violator, doesn't have to say who's gonna set anything.
Yeah, yeah, that's why we're, um. Physically coming to that, because it's a zoning violation, so whatever the zoning violation fees are, that's what they'd be paying.
Hey.
If Kirk, you wanna probably change, uh, in the second to last paragraph, change Rob's title. To whatever we decided it was. That after consistency.
Yep.
Yeah. Title maybe in other places in the zoning, where it's also on office. Wants to go through, we just ignore it now.
Is it incorrect to just use the title as land administrator?
Like I said, I didn't think so.
Because, because the titles are long.
Yes. Needs a lot of ink.
Yeah.
Of course, you work that much in. But we should use the same thing every time.
Hey.
Work designs.
We're beyond it, I think we're done with Kirk's, uh, document.
All right, here we are done. With Kirk.
All right, oh, actually, it was page seven, but we still. You okay with that? Now, maybe he's not licensed language.
I like that, because.
Changing the, uh, title.
Yeah, we're gonna change the title, I thought that was what we just talked about. I like it because, I mean. That was something I was insisting on in loving when I was on the task force there, that they had a sign thing and it was. Really what we're after is quality above anything else. And, uh. I hate to see signs bent over and leaning and rusty and.
Yeah.
You know, uh. A, a light that's not working, so instead of saying hotel, it says hot L, or something like that. Kate?
Yes?
Were you starting to say something?
No.
I was, oh, Dan, sorry.
Yeah, personally, I would, I would end it with owner of the property. Cause if you start getting into who owns the sign and all of that, it's up to the property owner. Not, you know, the property owner or the owner, well, the, you know, it can't be the owner of the sign, it has to be the owner of the property.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with Dan. Well, I think that gets into when, um, places have leases. And.
It's still the owner of the property.
Yeah, I think Dan's right on that, because it's easier to track down and hold the owner of the property accountable. And if they want to duke it out with their, their fee, then that's on them.
It's due to the property.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, okay.
I like it.
The other thing, Rob.
And we can lean their property down. What did you say?
I said, can you take the application down?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Cause we on Zoom can only see that.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Here we are.
We're back. All right.
All right.
And there's a lot more of you than there was.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So final, uh, zoning amendment proposal is the. We call Village Residential District, which is. Page two.
I think it's great.
Here's one little typo on it.
Where's that?
Right here in the middle.
Yeah.
Continue us to a street or fifteen parentheses, ten feet from any other. Lot boundary or twenty parentheses, twenty feet from the Northern Rail Trail.
Yeah, there are two, uh, so that's what we, as we discussed, we intended that to be ten.
It's supposed to be ten?
Yeah, we intended ten. And then the other one that would have to be made to match what we just talked about is the third from the bottom. I had just copied it, it says fifty feet is public right of way.
Yeah.
We would want to make that consistent with what is on this page here.
Okay.
So, street giving access to the lot.
So the twenty feet should be fifty?
No, the. No, the, up on the, in the center?
Yeah.
No, I'll, so I'll just write the whole thing just to get the sense.
Okay.
Right, so it's the two lots, and only the two lots on Shed Street who were previously in Public Works. And what we did is we took our current R1. District zoning. And we eliminated things that were not residential based. And then we made a few changes to allow more, so. One family, two family, multi-family dwellings connected to sewer and water, so they have to be connected to sewer and water. We left in the home occupations, the private yard sale, those are just things for residential uses. Same with, it's just a, a bullet issue, but the same with the accessory. Uh, uses. We changed minimum lot size, uh, it would have been, right now would be a half an acre for the water and sewer, the one eighth. Um, and then the next one, what we had done was. Located, uh, near the twenty feet, there's a lot line continues to a street, that's the same as the R1, so it's a setback in the street. And that's the same as R1. We reduced the other lot boundaries to ten feet. And then with twenty feet from the Northern Rail Trail. And I forget if that's actually more, I think that's actually more the. The current R1 restriction.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which is fifteen.
More difference between the rail trail and.
Right, so currently on those lots, you can go within fifteen feet of the rail trail, this would increase that, now another five feet. And then the height restriction thirty-five is the same as R1. And then otherwise, it's the same as the current. The next paragraph is the same as the current, uh, R1, no change. And then we did change the parking spaces to one per dwelling unit, uh, with the idea of encouraging additional dwelling units. Uh, and then, uh, we, we basically created, you know, one per four. Uh, in addition to the one per unit. Because you'll need just some additional parking for this. And then we left the size of the spaces exactly the same as currently. Uh, the current R1 needs a site plan review when you reach three units. We switched that to five, with the logic being. That you can buy, use a primary mortgage and have your primary residence up to four units. So we figured drawing the line between four and five, um, matched what is currently considered primary residences. And then the width of the lot being fifty feet, that's reduced from the current, and. Uh, the logic there was that a one eighth acre lot is basically fifty feet by a hundred feet, and that's sort of a common. Common lot size, if they're lots. And then we just had questions, because these would be new items. As I think about it, I don't think we should include them at this point, but whether we want to include energy efficiency standards or form-based standard for this vote. Personally, I kind of think we should wait until after the master plan to add anything of that nature in. Uh, but those are the basic changes that we made from R1 going to this new proposal. And of course, the overall intent is to. Demonstrate what can happen and provide more flexibility for the select board when they get RFPs for that property.
That's a good summary, thank you, Rob. Um, any comments on this draft for a, a new. New zoning district? Kate?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, Dan, you good?
Uh, the only question I've got is, how many accessory dwelling units can they have? This is what he says. You know, should there be one per lot?
Well, so ADUs only apply to single-family homes.
Okay.
By statutes, if somebody applied for a multi-family, you can.
And they can't have an ADU.
Correct.
Okay, that's all, I wanted to make sure.
Okay, uh, people around the table, Kirk? Yeah, um, I was gonna say, I'm French, I'm not in favor of spot zoning like this. So just in principle.
Neither do I.
Just in principle, I don't like, uh, concepts. Um, but that's, I'm not the one who has final say on what happens with this. Um. The eight through five, was that referencing what's kind of the zoning or?
Yeah, that would, that would have been a cut and paste. You can just double check and make sure. That that didn't get bugged on more, but that was just cut and paste. We literally started with R1 and deleted.
Yeah, yeah.
And then edited, uh.
Yeah, I just was like, what's happening?
And, and I think we put in bullets rather than what.
We did.
And that would be usually true.
Yeah, yeah, okay, now the one eighth lot, I actually forgot to measure what's the, most lots are, how many dimensions are?
I'd have to look exactly what it is. However, that's one where, um. Of course, they have a choice, and my hope would be the select board would take RFPs more on the multi-family dwelling side rather than somebody saying, saying nothing out. But they'd have to have fifty feet at the road front, according to that, they'd have that fifty feet. They would be limited by whatever the road from it is. With two acres, yeah, basically, sorry, two acres, whatever the road from it is, they'd have to have fifty feet for a lot. But I have to look to see what their road from it is. And they can buy law as well.
So just, just a quick thing.
Select board, I wanted to do that, they are selling.
Seeley wanted to know where this property was, and I just texted her back, but we can say it, it's the, it's the former Public Works facility. Up until two thousand and two or two thousand and three on Shed Street.
The Shed Street, uh, Public Works site.
Yep. Trade on the rail trail. There's still a couple buildings there that will be probably removed prior to sale of the property.
I was, I was referring to the Argo.
Right, oh, sorry.
That's okay.
It could be the hardware store.
That's, uh, sixty-four.
Next. That's, um, the, uh, local business.
I think it's sixty-four Main Street.
It is. It belongs to the sixty-four main. It belongs to the sixty-four Maine LLC.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just am quick from last night, late at night, last night, I was playing around with what twenty, one eighth of an acre lot looks like. And so I was just doing some square measurements. So, and with your setbacks, if you just you can draw out with a fifty foot road funding, and then going back from there, it's seventy-four by seventy-four, you do it perfect squares. And when you subtract all your setback areas or building area, you come up with a thirty-two by thirty-two foot buildable area. So unless I did my math all wrong.
But, but it can be looked at in a different way, whereas you combine those two lots, or two acres, and that gives the developer from to put in, treating it as one, one lot.
A typical one eighth acre lot, it would be fifty feet by a hundred feet. Which would give a thirty foot wide by eighty foot deep buildable area. Because you do ten feet off each side, twenty feet from the front, and twenty feet from the back. So you'd have a, you'd have a thirty by eighty.
There's the dimensions of the two lots too, if you guys want to look at it there, you can see the dimensions. Hundred and fifty-three feet. Two hundred and twenty-two is one of the sides. My thinking is that select board is gonna like, in terms of an RFP, multi-family is what it's gonna be, as opposed to subdividing it down to eight acre lots.
Right, I mean, that's the thing, if you're gonna say, someone buys these two lots, and then they can cover up market, so one eighth, one eighth acre lot. It's an oval home lot, that's what they'll do.
Well, the, the select board is soliciting development proposals.
Thank you, yes, we are. So we are soliciting very specific proposals. Yeah, we're soliciting, so we have an RFP, and we want to look at very specific proposals that are high-density housing. And so it's not to say we want to cram a bunch of small buildings onto teeny lots. We're looking at higher density, which means multiple units. Either within multiple buildings or within a larger subset of buildings. There was some talk about giving preference to creativity, pocket park type ideas, things like that, so that you're encouraging use of the rail trail and maybe setting out some parameters like expectations for accessibility, including sidewalks.
I mean, I would be more supportive of selling the lot as is with these restrictions. Or a, or initial restrictions on development. That's for an RFP type of requirement.
I think from an environmental and economic standpoint, it makes a lot more sense to encourage development that is very dense in the downtown area. It's walkable, it's accessible to public transportation, and so it obviously lowers the overall environmental impact while it's still taking into consideration that we have a serious housing shortage, you know? We just talked about Main Street and getting maybe what would get you like one or two units if we possibly change something this year. We'd be looking at a much more significant impact, and maybe something a little bit more affordable for folks and more accessible.
Because right now, the only RFPs that they can pay a lot would be half acre. So only four units would be the maximum for that. Like, anything else, I like the zoning, not so true. You have to expand the zoning for that lot in order to pay these other.
Do you remember we contemplated just changing the CB boundary to encompass this property? Problem with that is it gets into the whole business, you know, allowing businesses at that site in the future.
The idea of doing spot zoning, which I agree with you, you know, part of RFP, when it's a graduate is to, to use these two envelope blocks as a demonstration to be large, as to what can be done to provide denser housing, what is it gonna look like? And, you know, how affordable is it really gonna be? And by having the select board essentially pick a design how gets what it wants by way of demonstration. And the select board certainly can't put these three blocks, we can't do that with this stuff, right?
I, there are two things I want to add. One is, one of the examples we talked about was just, and it's not saying this is what we would get. But one of the examples we talked about is as you go into Norwich from Hanover, on the left, there is a pretty substantial but very attractive building that's pretty dense housing, that looks historical. So there are definitely ways to do dense housing that would respect, be respectful of, you know, our history and kind of our town culture. So I think that's one thing to consider. Another thing to consider is we have other properties in this town that eventually may, we may have to consider doing something with. And one of them I'd like to call your attention to is the End of Johnston Drive. That is across from the Mobile Home Park. Our town owns three lots down there, they are waterfront lots. You never want to sell waterfront necessarily, but you might want to do something that's beneficial to the town. Say, I don't know, like a waterfront restaurant, or, you know, I docking, whatever it might be, you know, maybe we need a marina. I'm not saying I know what it is, but that's another example of a place that might, might benefit from spot zoning, but I would really like to see it tried in this example before I looked at anything else. Those residences at the End of Johnston Drive have a lifetime lease, which sunsets with the life of the current occupant. One of them has already turned it back over to the town, so that's something eventually we're gonna have to be taking a look at.
You know, if this is goes forward, I I would like to see the one eighth acre eliminated. And if you just want multi-family housing there, then state that. But when you're saying one eighth acre lots, it just means, oh, it's a one eighth acre lot, you can't put a multi-family home on one acre to make a lot.
You definitely can. I mean, if you take a look at Lakeview, a lot of those condos, like if you're looking at narrow townhouses and the way they lay them out in different places, there are some pretty neat ways that they accommodate split levels, things like that, to do these kind of lots.
Yeah.
Well, part of it, I think we need a lot size, so, I mean, some lot size. Regardless where the, the other advantage in my mind of having an acre acre lot size is if this select board wanted to carve off a small piece for access.
This would allow them to carve off the one eighth acre size piece without, you know, allowed by.
I mean, they could do that, because they kind of own the property, just say, yes, there is a new property.
Well, no, they could. They could carve off an acre, because minimum block size.
No, no, they could just move the property up, we, it was site planning subdivision.
We, we can't create a lot that is less than whatever the.
It would be right, it would be right away to the rail trail. An unbuiltable lot, and say, right away to the rail trail. Like we said, it's town can do what it wants, but.
Size lot, do you think would be appropriate?
I would go to a quadruple, and that lot that's on the corner of Ball.
Hillsbury.
Line fifty-nine is a quadruple lot.
Hillsbury comes down right here.
Yeah, line fifty-nine has that mobile home on it, that's a quadruple lot.
Yeah, I guess it could be Union or Hillsbury, it's basically. I think technically, it's Hillsbury.
I thought Hillsbury turned the corner there.
Yeah, forty-two Hillsbury.
Yep.
I, I agree with you for this purpose.
Yeah, I like the vision. You know, it's only two lots that were going as a trial. And depending on how we ultimately define the Village Residential District, if it does in fact get extended. Obviously, there's a lot of pre-existing lots, and I think we want to take a look at them, see what sizes they are. And consider the potential for, you know, either maybe you have to buy those lots, you know, twenty years out when the people who are living there now decide that they might want to sell their properties. And, and just revisit the question of lot size at a later time. Yeah, I think this, we should look at this as a relatively short-term zoning procedure, or zoning, you know, redefining. Strictly for the purpose of allowing the town to create a demonstration project of lots that are real. How.
I guess, I guess back to, the ultimate goal is to have a higher density number of units on those two properties.
Right.
Still confined by what the physical size of the two lots combined is right now. Because that's what you want. So now I have no problems with multi-family homes being there. Number of units, components, assuming the components full-size homes, and you get much units on square footage area.
Right, I mean, we're, we're talking multi-family structures or apartments. Yeah. Because that's the way, that's the way you gain density units for bigger way.
So I would prefer that if we brought some ideas from developers and saying, this is, is the parcel location, here's the physical size of it. How many units could you put in there and still have Uber parking, your setbacks?
Then that's exactly what this select board did.
Right, but this is not what the select board is doing.
But this select board can do that without a chance.
Because it's R1 limited. We have the acreage, so by current standards, what is it, about two acres?
Four units. Right, but they could get ideas, and then try to change the zoning to fit the ideas that were presented.
Well, I don't think you'll get.
What comes first, the chicken or the egg?
Yeah.
And I think at this stage, the zoning needs to come first, because who's gonna bother putting together a presentation not knowing if, not a presentation, but a proposal, a development proposal, not knowing what the constraints of the zoning might be. And also, I think there's a time factor involved.
I was saying, I wonder what that also, I mean, maybe Kate, because I haven't heard this discussion at any of the select board meetings or minutes of selling this property. Kate, you want to address that?
Can you?
Yeah, I mean, we've definitely discussed selling this property more than once, and that is what was determined by, oh god, which committee is the name? Was it, yeah, municipal facility, thank you. So, boy, I'm like, there's so many letters on committee names, now I'm starting to lose track of them. So, I think it's something that we committed to doing something with this property and obviously getting it cleaned out. We went through that step, the former fire chief did get it cleaned out. And it, the longer you leave it, the more likely it is to just collect junk again, right? It doesn't have a stated future purpose, so looking at RFP, and, and Jack was working on it, I don't know, is the RFP launched yet? So I don't recall.
It's not, but we have a draft, we have a draft, I've, I've been working.
I would say, I've seen the draft, but I didn't see the launch yet, okay. So, I was not able, I guess, to make the last select board meeting. So I'm expecting that we will be able to have that conversation, and certainly something that I can address to have this coming Monday.
I know when the, the the facility studies, this was brought up, but that's the last time I've seen any discussion outside of the planning board on this property, so that's why I was wondering about the timeline. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just, I'm just questioning some, how well this work is proposed, but.
Another thing that remains to be seen too, is what will the neighborhood say when they catch wind of this, which they will soon, I'm sure.
So I mean, that is a relatively dense neighborhood anyway. It's populated by families with children and seniors largely. So I think it'd be, definitely will be interesting to hear their feedback. That being said, they do have a lot of foot traffic that goes in and out of town, and that, that spot has been relatively unsightly, so depending on what the proposal is, now they're probably gonna have different reactions. And I think certainly we would have to, as a select board, make sure that they are obviously notified and have an opportunity to take a look at things if they so choose.
I think the exciting part is that the selectmen hold all the cards. They can say, sorry developers, we were looking for something that sold their own house. To save the people money, and we want, I don't know. Whatever, whatever amenities there are, as long as they sell money and can get it and make money on buildings, they will buy it and go with to our specifications.
When we were talking, David and Eric and I were chatting, we were talking about Twin Pines has done some really great projects around the other valley. It has some very attractive, and we were, we were even talking about Anne's Place, right there on, on Route Four, next to yeah, across from the community building, how that one is like, was it nine units in there? Is it, is it more than that? And how unobtrusive it is, it just looks like a big house, you know? So, you know, there's, I think there's definitely some really exciting possibility there, so.
I think the other thing that we haven't mentioned is, there's no specific senior housing other than the older, is it, oh gosh. I'm having a moment, up off it, I don't know. So, I mean, in, one of the challenges in this community is that as people begin to look at retirement, a lot of them are in very large homes. Their family moves on, and there's no reason you can't keep your large home, but maybe you don't want to, there's nowhere to buy. So, you know, that is, this isn't necessarily gonna be one kind of housing or another, people have the ability to come in with all kinds of different proposals, and it would be exciting to see like an age and place proposal where it might free up some housing to invite in say a larger family or working professionals, and still allow somebody who's a valued member of our community to stay in our town and participate.
Yeah. That's another one, you mentioned, Kate mentioned Norwich, there's down, a little further down Main Street, near the Norwich Police Station. There's a senior housing complex that I think has been very successful, my wife's grandmother lived there for twenty years. And really neat, I mean, it's great, it'd be great to do something for our seniors to try to give them someplace where they can afford to stay and you know, obviously better design for them, you know?
I think there's a lot of really awesome possibilities, and I hope that the RFP will provoke some neat proposals and something that's a good fit for our community.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, let's see where this goes, you know? We gotta take this to public hearing, we gotta.
You know, we got to take this to public hearing. We got to get it, get it accepted by the people. You know, I think we ought to just let it go as it stands right there.
Anybody else have any comments?
One other thing I sort of question and is the five, five dwelling units are more applying the site plan. I think that's, I would rather just leave it at the three. But then you have some say in the matter. Especially if it's kind of, this like always getting our RFPs and it really shouldn't be a big issue. But if you have five and they come in with four, four, four and stuff like that. And like, this is what we're doing and you have no shame in that.
I'm seeing how you're seeing.
Well, currently, the way this is worded is, multi-filling drones consisting of five or more dwellings require a site plan approval. So if they do four dwelling units per structure, there's no site plan. And if they have one acre, one acre lots, it's going to be multiple separate lots with structures on them.
We're, we're talking about one specific lot of two acres.
No, there's just one acre. The developer can say, I'm covering it up, covering it up into one acre acre lot.
And then the select board is going to say, sorry, we're not going to accept that proposal. Even if you offer us a hundred thousand dollars an acre, we're not going to accept it. Because that's not what we want on these lots as a town. Sorry, sorry to yell.
No, no, but, but I don't see the select board going with it. They see dollar signs. Sell the lot. This is, here's the money. As well, when I'm hearing, okay, well.
I am not particularly lured by dollar signs. I live a very frugal life. So I think my life is a monument to the willingness to take a little bit of a risk and be a little bit different. So I'm fine with telling somebody that I think their proposal isn't a good fit for our community. And I see no reason for us to sell those as someone who has a bad fit. We would be better off saying no to every RFP that is a bad fit and selling them as multiple housing lots than we would be taking a bad fit.
Actually, I think on this one, Bert did identify, when you just talked about the drawing units. Do we need to save the lots? And saving more than five. So if they put more than five on a lot. They should have multiple buildings of four.
That's kind of what, yeah, that's, that's the intent.
Right. So, but do we need to include, you know, lots if they need more than five dwellings?
I mean, it's, it's sort of explicit, but you know, because, because Bert is bringing it up. That shows me that there's a difference interpretation.
Right. Well, I've been on the board long enough to, if Dan just probably sees more than I have, someone coming in and saying, no, this is what this means. And it's like, you have a hard arguments.
So, yeah, we, we, we need specifics.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah. It's not about the dwellings, but the number of units per lot.
Would it help you? Would it help you guys to see a copy of the RFP draft?
Well, I, I think I, I think I can figure out. Instead of tying it to the five or more dwelling units, tie lots with the dwellings themselves, you know, five or more dwellings units on a single lot.
Yeah, five.
I'll think about it. I'll think about it. Yeah.
Eric, Jack might be a good resource on wording as well.
Yeah.
Jack might be a good resource to help on a little bit of that wording as well. He's pretty good on those items.
Sure. You know, I personally would love to see the draft proposal. I don't think it's necessary for the writing of, of this ordinance draft.
No, but I think it would be good so that you have in your mind when people are asking questions about generally why we are considering doing this and what the possibilities are that you've seen it before, at least. Rob, would you be willing to circulate that?
Absolutely.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Anything else on Village Residence? No, it's going to take me out of, all right. So let's, let's move on. Master Plan Task Force. This past weekend was a marathon for many of us on Task Force. We had two live workshops of about two and a half hours each. And one Zoom workshop, which went awfully close for three hours. We had a, I thought, a really good attendance for Saturday, Saturday, Sunday, events. I won't have the exact figures. I'm guessing there were about twenty-five on Saturday morning. Few months to twenty Saturday afternoon. And a couple of people, Kate, on Sunday. Did we have about a dozen people on Sunday?
No, I think you had more like twenty people on Sunday because you had, some had more than one person in the frame, right? I think.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah. Okay.
I'm not quite, I'm, don't quote me on it, but I, I feel like you were in the neighborhood of twenty.
Okay. So, you know, all in all, we probably had somewhere between eighty and a hundred people attending. Most of them from what I could tell, voters, residents, or property owners. Eric's son, who was a great contributor. We have Cora Lee, who wants bouncy house zoning. Hi, Cora Lee. And.
Cora Lee wants a splash pad and an aquatic center.
Yeah, okay. So we're going to, we're definitely going to zone for that. Somewhere way out of Lock Haven, right?
We have one of those. Don't you know, we have a cow pond?
Let your kids swim in a cow pond?
We aren't really that limiting of people's choices around here.
Okay. I guess you could charge admission if you know there is something.
The insurance lady says no.
Oh, okay. So it was, I think, very, very successful. We had, you know, some common themes come out. Community building, places for people to gather. You know, focusing development primarily in the downtown village area. However, we lined up to find that basically Main Street. You know, there was, you know, it was a visioning session. So there were a couple of, you know, ideas that were kind of out of left field, but, you know, definitely aspirational. And we also launched our community-wide survey. And I told that as of this evening, we have a hundred or maybe slightly more than a hundred online responses, which for, you know, three days, I think it's pretty darn good. We will continue to push the survey. We'll have paper copies at various places around town. Library, this building, town office, and where do we decide on the fourth one? Or maybe we have it.
I think, yeah.
Okay. So we have one other survey drop-off that we have to figure out.
We can move it around.
Yeah, okay. We probably want to close the survey out somewhere around Thanksgiving. At our last meeting, our consultant gave us a timeline and assignments of what has to be done, by whom, on what date in order to have a rough draft available in the spring. Hopefully, you know, around town meeting, so we can distribute it there. But what we're looking for is a quality product, trying to meet the deadline. So that's pretty much where we are, very briefly of the master plan. I think it's going really well. Randy has injected a lot of new energy. So we are going. Next meeting is December eighth because we are, I'm talking about this group here, not the master plan task force. Our next meeting is December eighth. We're going to take off Thanksgiving week because nobody wants to have a meeting the day before Thanksgiving. And it's almost nine o'clock. So somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Okay, all in favor? I.
Hi.
We are adjourned at pretty much nine o'clock. Thank you, people. Have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Happy turkey.
You can get a turkey. There's short supply of turkey. You betcha.
The Bailey Farm and Line has lots and lots of orders available.
Okay. Hi, Dan. You're on mute, Dan. I can't hear you.
You got to think about the alternate thing again.
Getting some alternates?
Yeah, because I've got a feeling that Kurt's going on a long trip next year and I'm going on a long trip next year. We may not be there at the same time.
I can put something in the next newsletter looking for some alternates.
Yeah.
Okay. See you later.
Yeah.
Bye-bye.
Bye.